I'd like to call to order the open agenda meeting for the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education, January 22, 2015. Ms. Seri Dadi, if you please, call board. Dr. Kuligowski, here. Mr. Lern, here. Ms. Sharmer, here. Mr. Whitehouse, here. Ms. Winkler, here. Ms. Cullen, here. Ms. Fowler, here. Board members present. Thank you. Please join me in the salute. I would like to be beheaded by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we just ended the executive discussion and we discussed the board's agenda. The temporary court and legal status updates. And we noticed that this meeting was filed with the Borough Clerk of family, township clerk of Scotch Plains, the Times, and the Hatch. And you have an agenda possibly in front of you, but we're going to change the agenda a little bit because this is a very exciting meeting, which is why we have so many people here tonight. It's also very exciting. And we are really looking forward to recognizing outstanding teachers and staff members from all of our schools here in Scotch Plains-Fanwood. And knowing that they're also representing many, many fabulous teachers in our district. So what we want to do is recognize staff teachers and staff members by school. So we're going to ask that the staff members come up. A board member is going to read your resolution. Your principal is going to come up with you as well. The principals aren't going to speak because we have so many people to recognize tonight. But I'm sure that on a local level, in their own schools, they are taking the opportunity to talk. And so we're going to begin with Brunner and the board member who is going to be... Oh, she's already there. Charlotte Sharmer. And I would like to ask that the... That Charlene Hall and Tiffany Anis. And Scott Ford, the principal. He's half, Scott's halfway there.
Whereas Charlene Hall is a teacher at Flat Plains Public School, as well as the Burness School recipient of 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Educator of the Year. And whereas Mrs. Hall is highly skilled, third grade teacher, who gives every child her respect and attention, will create a warm, pleasant environment in which to learn. Mrs. Hall is a leader of professional development and an innovative range of technology in the classroom. And whereas, as a dedicated teacher and parent, Mrs. Hall carved out time to attend burners' schools, evening, weekend, and even summertime school events, and she is always available to the students and parents. Whereas Charlene Hall, creative and caring teacher, has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Charlene Hall for being recognized as Burness School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her receiving students. Whereas Tiffany Anis has been named Burness School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. And whereas, as an occupational therapist, Tiffany exudes high energy and positive spirit, and she knows just the right method to engage each and every student. And whereas Tiffany works not only on rewiring sensory input and modulating emotional responses, but also in helping children navigate through the spatial, fine motor world in order to dress themselves, to write, and to organize. And whereas Tiffany is a resource for students, parents, and her brethren, colleagues. She provides wonderful suggestions and feedback, offering often prepared written detailed notes which are truly helpful. And whereas Tiffany Anis is a creative and caring occupational therapist who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Tiffany Anis for being recognized as Burness School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continuing success.
The next school is Coles, and unfortunately neither of the individuals being recognized could be here this evening. But we do want to mention that Michelle Malozzi is being recognized as a Teacher of the Year. Of course, and she's in second grade. And Eileen Raska, who is a school library media specialist. And now we'd like to recognize Maureen Holler and Darlene Tomssula. And Amy Winker is our board member who's going to read the resolutions. Colleen Holberg is our crowd principal. Whereas Maureen Holler is a teacher at the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools, as well as the Evergreen School recipient of the 2014 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Whereas Ms. Holler is a beloved and respected first grade teacher who is positive role model for her students. Ms. Holler has created a nurturing environment for her students with each child as the opportunity to flourish and grow. Whereas in Ms. Holler's classroom, students gain knowledge about the substance of people and how to treat others with respect and kindness. Ms. Holler's students learn there are endless opportunities for everyone, whether you are a boy or a girl. Whereas Ms. Holler's students are learning there are no limits as to what she can do and by extension discover the possibilities of what they can do. Whereas Maureen Holler is a creative and caring teacher for her students and her parents, her colleagues and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes Maureen Holler for being recognized as Evergreen School recipient of the 2014 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continuing success. Whereas Darlene Tomssula has been named Evergreen School's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Mrs. Tomssula embraces her role as a school nurse every day with positive attitude and sense of humor. Mrs. Tomssula conducts herself with professionalism and integrity. And whereas Mrs. Tomssula has excellent communication skills and a strong moral compass. Mrs. Tomssula goes above and beyond what is expected. And whereas Mrs. Tomssula is highly organized and extremely competent and enjoys an excellent relationship with students, parents, and staff. Whereas Darlene Tomssula is Evergreen School's loving and caring school nurse, who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Darlene Tomssula for being recognized as Evergreen School's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continuing success. Okay, and next we're going to recognize from the band Heather Phillipsky and Connie Salzberg. Board member who's going to be reading the resolution. Whereas Connie Salzberg is a teacher at Evergreen School's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Mrs. Salzberg embraces her role as a school nurse every day, Mrs. Salzberg pays her time every day to listen to both the student and the staff medical and emotional reading. Mrs. Salzberg makes herself available for her laundry every day to care for sixteen students. And whereas Mrs. Salzberg checks all the handrails of all treats for the students in school to ensure they are safe and protected. And whereas Mrs. Salzberg gives a daily lesson to students who live in the classrooms following illness or socio-emotional challenges. Mrs. Salzberg periodically calls six students and staff members to check on how they are feeling. And whereas Mrs. Salzberg is active in all the teaching activities such as walk the school day, walk the barn, and fitness classes. And whereas Mrs. Salzberg is an active helper as well as a maintainer of the students who work in the morning. Mrs. Salzberg uses her specific brand of clothing for her employees. And whereas Mrs. Salzberg gives love and caring to school nurses in the sense of respect and admiration of her students, her parents, her colleagues, and her principal. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Mrs. Salzberg for being recognized as Evergreen School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continuing success. Whereas Heather Phillipsky is a tenured teacher at the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools, as well as Evergreen School's recipient of the 2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Mrs. Phillipsky is a warm, caring, and approachable educator who provides a gift of loving music to her students. Mrs. Phillipsky is reading history and stories, not songs. And whereas Mrs. Phillipsky volunteers regularly at the school events, including the walk the barn, the board dinner with Black Dog, the family breakfast, and family home trips. And whereas Heather Phillipsky is a creative and caring teacher who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Heather Phillipsky for being recognized as Evergreen School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continuing success. Next, we're going to recognize the recipients from School One Christine Sagada and Diane Heath. The board member who is recognizing our School One representatives for this award is Karen Kuligowski. And Justin Fiore is School One's principal. Whereas Christine Sagada is a tenured teacher at the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools, as well as School One's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Ms. Sagada is highly skilled, a third grade teacher, who has created a warm and inviting classroom where she provides a rich learning environment for children to thrive. And whereas Ms. Sagada has demonstrated a willingness to tap into the resources outside the classroom to help children learn to their full potential. And whereas Ms. Sagada actively seeks ways to grow as a professional and share her experience with others, for example, through lesson study. And whereas Christine Sagada is a creative and caring teacher who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Christine Sagada for being recognized as School One's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Whereas Diane Heath has been named as School One's recipient of the year for the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Mrs. Heath is School One's speech therapist and a true professional who provides rich learning environment for all children. Mrs. Heath demonstrates a willingness to tap into resources outside the classroom to help her children learn to their full potential. And whereas Mrs. Heath's positive outlook and problem-solving skills motivates her fellow team members. Mrs. Heath's empathy, compassion, excellent communication skills, and her ability to care for others are evident in all that she does. And whereas Diane Heath is a creative and caring speech therapist who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Diane Heath for being recognized as School One's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award and extends to her the best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations. And next, we're going to be recognizing Heidi Sweeney from Park.
Whereas Heidi Sweeney is a veteran, highly effective teacher at Park Middle School and a recipient of Park's 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Mrs. Sweeney develops and implements engaging world history lessons that encourage students to think critically. The end goal is for students to be responsible global citizens in our world. And whereas through the use of technology, various discussion frameworks, and student input, Mrs. Sweeney strives to teach students to think for themselves and form and support your opinions. And whereas Mrs. Sweeney is a dedicated professional who inspires everyone to be the best that they can be. And whereas Heidi Sweeney is a creative and caring teacher who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Heidi Sweeney for being recognized as Park Middle School's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success.
Next, we're going to recognize Michelle Emanuel from Carroll. And Evan Murray is the board member who's going to recognize her. And Dr. Holloway, the principal of Carroll this evening as well.
Whereas Michelle Emanuel is a world language educator in the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools, as well as Carroll Middle School's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Michelle is a charismatic and enthusiastic educator who provides a caring and very caring learning advice to all her students. And whereas Michelle is a highly skilled educator who creates student-centered instruction to lead her students' reading. Michelle brings her life experience, living abroad, and her world language instructions so that students can have authentic learning experiences. And whereas Michelle Emanuel is a creative and caring teacher who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Michelle Emanuel for being recognized as Carroll Middle School's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends her best wishes for her continued success.
And of course, we have the high school Elizabeth Coleman and Catherine Hoffman. And Chris Whitehouse is the board member who's going to be reading the resolution.
Whereas Elizabeth Coleman is a tenured teacher at the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools, as well as Scotch Plains-Fanwood High School's recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Mrs. Coleman is a language arts teacher and educator who fosters an environment that creates love learning and personal responsibility among her students. Mrs. Coleman is due to attend a reading program with her classmates and we like to promote her purchase to enhance her classroom library. And whereas Mrs. Coleman spends countless hours with individual students, both before and after school, conferencing on reading and writing. And Mrs. Coleman has assisted many high school students with their college essays. And whereas Elizabeth Coleman is a creative and caring teacher who has earned the respect and admiration of her students, her families, her colleagues, and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Elizabeth Coleman for being recognized as Scotch Plains-Fanwood High School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Whereas Catherine Hoffman has been named Scotch Plains High School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Mrs. Hoffman is a dedicated high school guidance counselor who puts a great deal of time in getting to know her students and helping them find the proper path to success. And whereas Mrs. Hoffman is a reflective listener who is also available to her students. Mrs. Hoffman is skilled at coaching students and making the right decisions. And whereas Mrs. Hoffman is a student of seminar for college essay writing, thereby providing students with valuable feedback and assistance. And whereas Catherine Hoffman is a creative and caring guidance counselor who has earned the respect and admiration of her students, her families, her colleagues, and her principal for her unselfish commitment to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Catherine Hoffman for being recognized as Scotch Plains-Fanwood High School recipient of the 2014-2015 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success.
So we, I think that we've had a number of resolutions that have been moved here and I think essentially seconded. Do we need seconds? Can I have a second? Okay, an official second there. I'm sure this is one of those votes that will probably be unanimous. So all those are taped. All those posed. Okay, but I'm sure that the board would like to make a few comments and then we would like to take some photos of the award winners. But I do want to give the board a chance to think. Do you want to add anything?
Well, you're all loony now. First off, congratulations to all the recipients. For the first time in seven or eight years, I didn't have to prepare anything ahead of time and I still found myself writing notes. Boy oh boy, classroom educators, therapists, health professionals, guidance counselors, fine arts and language arts, media specialist, world language. I mean, can we not excel in anything as far as some of the stars we have for our children? Additionally, the next layer, building principals, parent colleagues, as well as retired colleagues I see in the room. Spouses, students, children, I even saw stuffed animals somewhere in there. Centered there. All I would have to say beyond congratulations and the support of the recipients provided to our students and those that are in this room that provide to our recipients are what a family we share here and what a school district we have. So thank you all very much.
Are there any other comments? We're just very lucky, I mean, you have a veteran here that does the service. We have someone who's spending their own money. I mean, that says a lot to me, the veterans teaching history, which I think is a great thing for a veteran to do because I'm sure they know a lot about history, I would admit. That's why they do what they do. But every festive year, we're just so proud to have you here as teachers, the principals, that I just announced and told you. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm thinking that when I was thinking about tonight, I was thinking about what a huge responsibility it is to be a teacher. And I'm not sure that everyone thinks about that when they go into teaching. But certainly over the years, and all of you who've been recognized tonight have felt that responsibility. But I also was thinking about that word. And when you break it apart, one of the ways that you could look at it is responding to your ability. And obviously, that's something that everyone who's being recognized tonight has done. You've responded to your own potential. You have really excelled and you have been a lifelong learner and shared with our students. And I'm glad Mr. Whitehouse pointed out the variety in the audience. I know the camera can't see the students and so forth. So we really appreciate all that you do, have done, and will be doing. And after we take the photo, we are going to have a brief break to celebrate. There's some refreshments outside. And then if you do not want to come back and business of the agenda, that's okay. We understand, but we're glad you're here with us tonight to celebrate. So if you will come up and...
I just wanted to add one or two more comments. And that is, first of all, I want to thank all of the teachers, all of the parents, all the staff members, all the members of the community who put the effort out to make these nominations. This was an amazing process this year. I want to thank the STFDA for supporting the process. And I just want to tell you how proud I am that we are able to recognize fine teachers in our district. We've waited a long time to do this and I'm just so proud that we're able to recognize each and every one of you and by extension, the colleagues that you represent. Truly, our district is blessed to have such incredibly creative, dedicated educators and support deaf professionals in every slice of what we have to do. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you do each and every day for our kids. Education is a very challenging occupation. And particularly these days, it's among the most challenging with all the changes that we're all experiencing. And each and every day, you keep the kids foremost. And for that, we're humbly grateful for all you do. So thank you. And everyone, everyone, come up. And Anne is going to try to get some great smoke shots forward.
Hey, congratulations.
Teachers and Professionals from all of our schools here in Scotch Plains, Kansas. And we're going to continue where we are on the agenda as additions to the agenda. And I believe we have four S, field trip requests, and also four B U S, which is related services through private vendors. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, so seeing none, we're going to actually get to that part of the agenda in accordance with Policy 9322-R. The meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comment. We just ask that when you come to the podium, you give us your name and the town that you live in. Okay, so seeing no one, we're going to move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports for this evening? Okay, Mrs. Winkler.
I have a shared services report and I need to apologize again for giving it to my fellow leaders who did not fill out a form and send it out, but this meeting was this morning. So I will, I will fill out the form and send it out. This morning, the shared services mentioned that we had a very brief discussion about the runner drop off, mostly just to state that we still need to come back with progress support on that. We had said when we began it that we would look at it later on and report back on whether things have improved and not improved, whether we had other thoughts and ideas on things that should be done. What else? We spoke briefly about the safe routes to school grants that the DOT puts out. The three entities are going to try to work together on this. We need to pass our policy. The DOT, I think, has maybe some sample policies on their website before I will look into that. There was some discussion about getting some more of the school events onto the local cable channels and there's going to be a follow-up meeting of a subgroup of the shared services group to discuss the possibilities and how to do that and make that happen. We spoke, we spoke briefly about IT services. Both municipalities are interested in possibly working together and possibly with us on getting some sort of technical expertise going on for their computer systems. I think troubleshooting and someone to be there when things aren't working properly, but also maybe some basic computer literacy. Kind of said, you know, we have people, we have a very small sort of staff, we're garbling with doing it now, so we're not really contracting that out. Two municipalities were talking about, but we'll, we'll see where that goes. There was some discussion about possibly getting a kids recreation trust on grant or at least applying for one to approve the fields behind the central middle school. We talked briefly about park middle school parking issues. We are short a large number of spots for our staff that actually work at park and we're trying to figure out what we can possibly do to expand parking options for those staff. We were going to discuss possibilities of moving voting sites out of the schools. We've been told to speak with the election board about that, that that's really the bottom line for where that decision comes from and that we should go with some possible suggestions for where polling locations we move, what we move those schools. Being mindful that the voting districts, the polling places are selected to be within the area of the voters that are going to. And then our next meeting will be February 29th.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Winkler. It's a very busy meeting. Any questions? Any other reports? Any other committee reports? Okay, then we will move on. There are no letters, no, we did our instructional update, no letters to the board, so it's on the super committee's.
Thank you. Currently, we have no add district placements, so when updated, we can come in. At our next meeting, I will ask the board approve superintendent's decisions in the nine harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases that are reported during executive session on December 11th and December 18th, 2014. Three S tonight, I am happy to report that the New Jersey Department of Education has approved each of our schools' self-assessments related to the anti-bullying bill of rights for this district. And then as an extension of that, they have approved our district's assessment. And related to that, I'm going to read a statement and then I will ask that the board acknowledge receipt of this approval from the New Jersey Department of Ed. The self-assessment scores were approved by the Board of Education and the Division of State Department of Education in the summer of 2014. The state has approved these scores and has also given our district the number grade that is the average of each school's composite score. As required under state law, these grades are now posted on the homepage of each school as well as our district's website. Please note that the grading scale for these assessments goes from zero to 78 and a score of 52 would be achieved if the school met all requirements. Individual school grades in our district, as previously approved by the board, range from 61 to 67 and our district grade was a 63. So tonight, I would ask the board acknowledge the NJ DOE approval of our district's and our school's self-assessment.
So, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Tonight, I would also ask that the board approve the two field trips that are listed on the agenda as well as the one that is the addition. Our high school students, approximately 20 to 35 of them, plan to travel to the College of New Jersey to attend a workshop on leadership. Carol Middle School plans to attend NJ PAT on Friday, May 29th, the state create the festival sponsored by the Jazz Bands. And approximately 7 to 10 for our high school students plan to attend the Gay Street Alliance Leadership Summit that will be held at Dickinson College on February 29th.
That's all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. And tonight, I am going to express to the public that we have come up with a option E for the school calendar. At our meeting in December, I presented a calendar that now is labeled as Option A, Draft A. The primary difference between the two calendars is that when we put the calendar out in December, we did ask for feedback from the public, but we did not have a lot of feedback. We did have several families that weighed in with a concern about students coming back before Labor Day. Labor Day is very late this year and so out of respect for that input, we have developed a Plan B. The primary difference between the two calendars is that in Draft A, students come to school on the 3rd of September and the last day of school would be June 21st. There would also be a four-day February weekend for that. In Draft B, the staff development day that is on February 12th is moved to the end of the school year and the students don't report until September 8th. That pushes out the last day of school one more day to Wednesday, June 22nd. There's not a huge difference that you can make in respect to how late work happens if you go into June, but it is a significant difference as to whether students come back before Labor Day or after Labor Day. Both calendars are on the district website and there's a link underneath that where parents can click on it and they can register their preference. You don't have to sign your name. We're tracking those responses and I hope to have feedback for the board and if possible, we'd like to vote on either Option A or B at our next meeting on December 29th.
Other questions from the board?
I'm sorry, January 29th.
Are there questions from the board about either of the calendars?
Okay, and then I would ask that the board approve personnel agenda as discussed in executive meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, all, all, okay. Dr. Kulikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Swinburne?
Yes.
Thank you, and that concludes my report. Okay, and now we'll move on to the business. Mrs. Sarah Beck?
Oh, you're the ones I'd like to run on first.
Okay, thank you.
One, the U S is approval of staff training on the report date, November 22nd, 2015. Four, the U S is related services through private vendors. On the agenda, it's for out of house consulting, system technology, and an additional student agenda there is for children for P C D A services. Ten, the U S is approval of a construction change order. This was the roofing work that was done at Carol Middle School. They had to do some additional workplace rework on the roof. Eleven, the U S is the approval of the architect to submit additional paperwork required by the state and that's for modification of our supervisors offices. Thirteen, the U S is, this was previously approved, but the dollar amounts have changed. What happened is the first number they gave us wasn't correct, but then it actually reduced from the first number they gave us to a monthly cost of $3,371. The cost they originally gave us was in two parts and they said that we had to include one window, we had to include both. So, this is for internet services through the little sex regional educational services commission that was in a statewide bid and these services will be approved, contrasted. Fourteen, the U S is donation of marching band prom. The marching band show last year had some large white columns, which space-wise take up about half of this room to store. And since they're done with them, there's another school in Brentwood, New York, that's going to do a similar show next year and marching band. The high school would like to donate these columns to that school. And that's it for the U S.
Okay, questions and comments? Mrs. Sarah Beck? Want any of these? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I had moved it.
Okay, you want to continue with the ones we're voting on next?
Yes. Two, the U S is the announcement of the property destruction listings as we do in November of December. Three, the U S is acknowledgement of received of the security and fire control reports for December. Five, the U S is an election of a board delegate to serve on New Jersey school boards. Six, the U S is approval of Claris Capital. Every two years, we're required to have an actuary of preparation for our health services that we provide to our retirees. And every, on all years, it's less expensive because it's a rollover calculation, but this is the year where we have to have full calculation. And the price has not changed in, this will be the third time we've used this population and there's been no increase. Seven, the U S is contract with Jersey Professional Management for the Shared Services Committee with the family of the Scotch Plains. Our portion is $2,310 per year. We pay one-third of it. Eight, the U S is contract enrolled for DOT testing with prevention specialists. This is for our school bus drivers and the legal requirement is for planning testing for drugs and alcohol and the cost is $250 per year plus the land costs, which run about $68 a test. I'm just one that you have to vote on, I'll go back to that. Twelve, the U S is approval to request proposals for auditor to perform the 2014-15 audit and that would be an RFP that we put out. And fifteen, the U S is the receipt of the business reports for December. And sixteen, the U S is the bill list, which will be there for December 12th through January 23rd.
Okay, any questions about any of those? Okay, and you have one to go back to?
Yes, nine, the U S, I forgot to mention. That's a change to a dollar amount. We had them provided, I think it was just a type of an incorrect dollar amount for one of the, people who works on the rep theater is the lighting designer. We had approved 1250, it should have been 1750, which is comparable to what we just paid last year. This is just a correction in that dollar.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions here? So, thank you very much. Board policies? Mrs. Winkler? You want to come on?
Yeah, I'd like to move forward. The board approved the second final review for adoption of the following policies, number 5200 as well as the R 5200 for tenants, 2412 and R 2412 for home construction for health condition, 5339 for dyslexia, 5756 for transgender students.
Okay, well, thank you for making the motion. But are there any questions about these policies? Any one have questions? Okay, then new board business? Anyone have new board business? Other board business, requests within workshops? Workshop reports? It's early in the year. Okay, now we'll have the motion for the resolution for Black History Month next, at the next meeting. So, someone will be reading that and at the next meeting approving the board committee assignments as well. And approval for the minutes for the next meeting. So, now is the final opportunity for the public, according to Policy 9322-R. Anyone would like to come to the microphone? Seeing no one, does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Mr. Whitehouse?
I'd like to welcome Mrs. Bauer to the gavel chair. And well done on your first meeting, you're almost setting records after a half hour recognition ceremony. We're still going to be journeying before 9:00. Well done, Mrs. Bauer, and again, welcome as the leader of the board for this year.
Thank you, and I was asked, I'm elected and I was, and I want to add my thanks to the ones that the board did at the organizational meeting for Mr. Whitehouse, who has done a remarkable job for a number of years, so I appreciate it. And I know that the board and the, and the town does as well, our school district. Any other, anything else for the good of the order? Yes, we wanted to announce, do you want to mention about the E E F?
Our education and retreat foundation is sponsoring its second annual B state dinner on Thursday, March 5th, from 6:30 to 10 at St. Paul's Families. The education and retreat foundation... The Education and Enrichment Foundation supports all of our schools, our teachers, they help us with innovative programming, and so anybody that would like to support them is invited to come out for a, I told you it might be an incredibly delicious dinner, that will be about $40 per person, and if you get a table of 10, and you can purchase your tickets prior to February 27th. This is the East State Dinner, which is spicy meat, tenderloin, salad, bread, fries, desserts, coffee, there is a vegetarian option, but also at that night, they hope to recognize teachers who are named this year's recipients of the Education and Enrichment Foundation grants, so it should be a very nice thing to celebrate.
And is this on our website, or it won't be?
It will be, and it's also being sent out through the PTAs, through their U S.
Wonderful. And good company, as well as the menu. Anyone, anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
I just want to mention the artwork, because we have new artwork from the beginning of the year here from multiple schools, and so if you come to a board meeting, you can see it, opposed of course.
So, can I have a motion to adjourn? So who? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.